Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2016. I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you and welcome again. Ted, if you would please roll call.
Sure. Samurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Then we're here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And next up, we have Highlander Highlights. Tonight, the board will honor the Finance Department for receiving the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. And I'll read this press release. Financial Department earns ninth consecutive national award. The Association of School Board Officials International, which is the ASBO, has selected the Columbia Heights Public Schools Finance Department for its ninth consecutive Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. The award is the highest recognition for school district financial operations and is only conferred to school districts that have met or exceeded the most stringent standards for financial reporting and accountability. The Finance Department was selected for its excellence in the preparation and issuance of the fiscal year 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the CAFER. The CAFER, which states the financial position of the school system through financial statements and statistical information, provides the summary and detailed information for the school year being reported and for the previous decade. This recognition is significant, not just for our school district but for our communities, says Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Our community has entrusted us with their hard-earned monies to create worlds of opportunity for every learner in Columbia Heights Public Schools and to do it financially prudent, responsible, and transparent, and that way we're doing it each and every day. ASBO was founded in 1910. It's a profession, is a professional association of more than 5,000 members that provides programs and services to promote the highest standards of school business management practices, professional growth, and the effective use of educational resources. So I would like to have Director Holm going to come up, please.
And I'll read this to you first. Columbia Heights Public Schools Finance Department is recognized for being awarded the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. Thank you for your dedication to the students, staff, and community of Columbia Heights Public School District. I'll start with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then we have the actual award here. It says, "This Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting is presented to Columbia Heights Public Schools for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFER, for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015." So. Thank you. Thanks, John. Mr. Speaker.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulations. That's exciting. I guess I don't know if a CAFER is really exciting, but it's certainly exciting that we're being recognized for doing a good job with it, so I'll amend that. Next up is Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. The first up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Holla? Thank you.
Second.
Natty. And discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. Motion carries. Announcements, October 14th, Friday, no school. The district has an in-service day. On October 18th at 5:00 PM will be a school board listening session. At 5:30, school board work session also on October 18th. And on October 18th, Tuesday at 7:30 PM, there will be a school board candidate forum here in the community room. October 20th and 21st, there is no school. And October 25th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM would be a regular school board meeting. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Communication to the board. Citizens, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone here that wants to speak as a citizen? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Again, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. Motion carries. Discussion Reports Information Items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Holla, would you mind going first tonight?
Sure. Last week, I attended the Valley View PTO for the first time, and that was great. And I, since then, I've also met with and received phone calls from constituents, so it's always good to hear from the public.
Okay. Thank you.
I was able to take in both JV and varsity football games and a girls volleyball game, which is exciting. Homecoming was very fun to be a part of. Also, received phone calls and had conversations with members of the community.
Okay, thanks. Molly?
I also attended the varsity football games, including a big win on homecoming, which was very exciting, so congratulations to the football team. Also, attended seventh and eighth grade football games, some strikers, soccer games, volleyball games. Had an opportunity to attend the Medal of Honor Ceremony last week. Is that last week? I'm sorry. Okay.
Last Thursday.
And also, had an opportunity to go in and listen to the fourth grade lesson with Thomas Kelly, the Medal of Honor recipient, and that was really exciting. It was really good to see the kids so engaged in the lesson and understanding of why we're doing what we're doing. Also, met with Superintendent Kelly and attended the pep fest together. That was awesome. Thank you for your time. Met with auditors. I was the board member randomly selected this morning. And also, attended the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council last night. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Ted?
I also attended the Medal of Honor Ceremony and just very inspiring. And what a great legacy we have here in Columbia Heights with Private LaBelle, First Class LaBelle, and Matthew Miller. And kudos to the administration for orchestrating the bald eagle flyover. That was very good. Also, attended the homecoming game, the varsity football game. The highlight for me is just hearing everybody sing Roll On after the end, after they did such a wonderful job, and just the school spirit was there. It's fantastic, so kudos to everybody for that. And the fireworks, of course, that's such a highlight, and I'm glad we're continuing that tradition for so many years. And then I also want to comment, just walking around the district and talking to constituents, the number of Highlander signs out are just fabulous, the home of the Highlander. So I just, I'm so proud of our district and the spirit that seems to be out there, probably being Highlanders.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I also attended the Medal of Honor Ceremony here, and it really could not have been more perfect. And the bald eagle really did fly over. I mean, it was an absolutely perfect event. It was very inspiring. It was really pretty amazing. And I just, what a wonderful job that everybody did to put that event together. It was absolutely amazing. I really enjoyed myself, and I will treasure those memories. And it was great to see all the kids really participating in it. I mean, just, you know, not a whisper or a word, they were just wrapped into what was going on with that. So that was very inspiring for the children as well. And the drum line and the honor guard, and yeah, it was amazing. I can't go on. And then I also attended actually the one over at LaBelle Park that the city put on too. And they did a very good job too, so they really did. And the bald eagle flew over again. So I think, I believe the bald eagle actually lives at the park because I have seen it in the neighborhood. It's just perfect timing, you know? It was wonderful. And I also attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting.
Okay, thank you. You got the Medal of Honor? Oh, I'm not just going to mention the plaques and stuff, but if it's 10 years old, just leave them. Okay. I also had the opportunity, privilege of being able to attend the Medal of Honor Ceremony here at the high school, and I would concur with Member Landwear. Administration did a phenomenal job as far as putting things together. It went off without a hitch. It was very professional, very moving. I think it was cool, the bald eagles. I don't know if she pulled that off, but if she wants to take credit for it, I'll give it to her, I guess. And as Laura touched on, there were several pieces to it. Would be at the drum line, the dynamic choir, the U.S. Marine Corps Honor Guard raised the flag, the fire department had their ladder truck there as a backdrop. We had many distinguished guests that showed up. It was just, it was really, really cool. And there's two plaques that are out in the horseshoe out here. One was dedicated to Matt Miller for his heroic efforts with the 35W Bridge, and then of course, our own James LaBelle for his Medal of Honor. So if you get an opportunity or make an opportunity, come and look at the plaques. There's really nice benches out there. It was just really, really well done, leading up to what we have now there, so nice job. I also was able to attend the Medal of Honor Ceremony for the city of Columbia Heights. They rededicated a plaque and a flagpole at LaBelle Park. It's actually off of 41st LaBelle Park. The address is 42nd, but I don't know if you went 41st east off of Central and walked down there, there's a beautiful plaque and a new flagpole there as well. And they did do a nice job of recognizing and honoring Mr. LaBelle. I, through the fire department, was able to assist with the bonfire for homecoming Thursday night. The kids were well behaved, seemed to have a good time. We, for whatever reason, maybe it's that whole bald eagle thing coming through, but there was like an hour and a half to two-hour window where there was no rain. It rained right before, and then it poured afterwards, which helped us put the fire out. But either way, the kids had an opportunity to enjoy themselves without it being miserable. I also attended the pep fest for homecoming on Friday. I was at the football game as well, and again, congratulations to the team for their victory. I took or made an opportunity to sneak in and watch the girls volleyball for a little bit tonight before the chair meeting with Laura and Superintendent Kelly. And then I've also had multiple conversations with constituents throughout the community. And that concludes my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chair and members, the superintendent of St. Anthony New Brighton and I met to discuss future collaborations this last week and the process, and process some of the things that we're already currently doing. St. Anthony continues to report that they are very happy with the collaborative projects that we're doing and would like to do more. So we're going to have them over to our place at the end of October and to really process around how last summer seminar went, what we want to do in the future with those classes. Those have been very well received, and the students between the two districts have become very good friends. So we're happy about that. And another exciting thing that is happening are the classroom visits that we are doing, kind of pen pals between and among St. Anthony, and primarily St. Anthony and Columbia Heights, but there's a few other districts involved too, that I think over the course of the year, Director Stenwick will come in and report out to you. There's some very exciting things going on that include both children's activities and teachers having staff development simultaneously. So Director Xena Stenwick and I met with the University of Minnesota staff to confirm her superintendent internship, so congratulations with her. She'll be working with me for the 2016-17 school year, and I look forward to working with her on the process throughout the year. In this very room, while Chair Larkin was out in the rain with the bonfire, Director Hollaby and Jane and Marcia and I were in this room at an American Indian education program and dinner, and it was very warm and cozy as well. Wonderful food and conversation, and the content was helpful. There was approximately 50 people, I think, that showed up for that. There were just tables full of people. And one thing that I thought was just very touching is that the fax teacher had gone out to the garden earlier and made bouquets of flowers in mason jars, and they were different at each of the tables, and the families got to take those home at the end of the evening, and they were all byproducts of what was left over in the garden. So it was a wonderful evening, and I want to thank those of you here and those that weren't here. As always, Mr. Larson was our Native American liaison, and his wife Valerie were just outstanding that evening as well. I want to say special thanks to everyone that worked on the Medal of Honor festivities in the district, not only on the day, but those that have been implementing the curriculum at the high school and in summer seminar, and for the fourth grade team and the LEAP over at Highland that are piloting actually the brand-new Highland curriculum, because beyond the dedication, it's really the core values that live on and the models that we would like to put out there for children. Having said that, Thursday, in my mind, was kind of like a four-ring circus because we had the dedication that was going on and a lot of support from a lot of people. But for those of you that don't know, after the dedication, it split into three different directions. And so there was a high school school site visit with a Medal of Honor person, and that was quite moving. And then there was about 350 people and students involved in that. And then the, another group went over to Highland, and that's something that Member Lewis talked about, and had the opportunity of talking to another Medal of Honor recipient. And then the third group came back, invited guests for the Millers and for the LaBelle family, and they had a reception in this room hosted by the school board, and for those of you that could attend, that was wonderful. And the chef, which is our resident chef here in the district, and Wendy Boarditton outdid themselves for the food, and it looked like we were just, I mean, they were the same carrots and vegetables and things we ordinarily would, but the presentation was amazing and people enjoyed it. The cake was delicious. And Bonnie Hughes and Becca Miller decorated the room, and I want to thank them because it, you walked in and it was just like, it was beautiful. It was like going to prom almost in a way. So there we have it. So thanks to everybody for all of that. I attended the, also attended the city of Columbia Heights Flagpole rededication on Friday, and I really felt when the bald eagle flew over for a second time that I was vindicated because there were some that thought I had seen a seagull at our last dedication. And so I do have Xena to rely on that it really was a bald eagle that we saw because she saw it first, but it was nice to see the bald eagle come again. We have some really good news in the district that we are celebrating tonight, and it's on our website, so I'm not going to read all of the names, but we have, currently have 17 current and regularly graduated Columbia Heights High School students who have been named and selected as the 2016 Advanced Placement Scholars. And this is up from last year. Of the 17, three were named AP Scholars with Honors, which is very, very, it's wonderful. And we had six more students this year than we had in 2015. So if you want to look at those, you can either follow me on Instagram, and there's a link, or you can go to the website, or Casey's putting out press releases on it too. So congratulations to each and every one of those students and their families. I want to thank the Frilly and Columbia Heights Rotary Club for donating the dictionaries to our third grade students in the district. That happened this last week. And I also want to say once again that Ed Minnesota Local 710 is hosting the school board candidate forum at 7:30 next Tuesday, the 18th, at the District Center, and that forum is open to the public. I've had multiple meetings with school board members and community members in this last two weeks, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your time and feedback. I'm done now.
Thanks. All right, next up will be the Placement Center Report, Ethnics City Report.
Thank you, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I see, don't see the PowerPoint there. Hmm, Brian's not here. Pardon me.
The upper.
There it is, thank you. I'm like, good thing I brought my glasses and good thing I have board members with handy eyes. Like, thank you very much. Okay. So, every year, I'm invited to give you a wrap-up of the Placement Center from the previous year, so it is my pleasure to tell you what all went on in the 15-16 school year at the Placement Center. Core values of definitely community, it's the first face that people see when they move into our community and come to our school. Excellence, always get the highest compliments from the Placement Center and the service that families receive there. So here are the Placement Center enrollment totals since the first day it opened, I love going back and looking at this, August 15th, 2004. 16,761 students have come through our Placement Center, not including this fall, but through June 30th last year. Just astonishing, isn't it? Here's the monthly average enrollment for the 15-16, starts with 10-11 and goes through the 15-16 school year. Apologize, it's hard to pick colors that you can see, but you can see in the spring, it's pretty even. We had a spike last fall. This is the Placement Center traffic by grade. So you can see at Highland, had 315 kids, North Park, 281, Valley View, 306, Columbia Academy, 331, and the high school, 205. So last year, 15-16 school year, there were 1,438 kids registered through the Placement Placement Center traffic by race for the 15-16 year, you can see the division. We separate out black, white, Asian, American Indian, and Hispanic. And this, if you want more detailed information, this is Placement Center traffic by race. American Indian, 41, Asian, 55, white, 229, Hispanic, 520, and African American, 593, and we also break it down by grade. And this is our amazing languages that come through our Placement Center. Last year, for their first language, we had 788 English speakers, Spanish, 441, Somali, 91, and Arabic, 32. And then we list the other languages that we don't have as many of. The EL students that enrolled in 15-16, can see that broken down by Highland, North Park, Valley View, Columbia Academy, and the high school. And there were 526 EL students that enrolled last year, which was 37% of our entire students that enrolled last year. Open enrollment registrations, the elementaries had a total of 137, the middle school, 78, and the high school, 72, that enrolled from other districts into ours. So that's 287 students. Special education students that registered in the 15-16 year, 129 at the elementaries, 63 at the middle school, and 35 at the high school. And so there are 227 students on an IP enrolled through the Placement Center last year. So far this year, the amount of students that have enrolled, you can see Highland, 587, Valley View, 485, North Park, 541, Columbia Academy, 754, and the high school, 910. That does not mean those are those current numbers, those are how many have registered and enrolled. So that's 3,277 students that registered, continual students that matriculated and that came in and enrolled. And you see these in your Thursday packet. One thing I do want to add this year that is new is we have put the pre-K, which I'm sure you've noticed. We've started to put the pre-K enrollments now that we're fortunate enough to have pre-K for four-year-olds in each one of our buildings because they do use the principal and the deans and the facilities, and we do like to add those numbers now in to the enrollment. The Placement Center this year, so you'll see this on the end-of-the-year report for next year, the Placement Center now is also enrolling all of our pre-K students. So they come in and they fill out packets for their students to get lunch and to get their uniform information, and they get, they're treated just as if they're kindergartners. And I know Director Stunkel's very thrilled because she always calls them our littlest scholars, and so it's cute to see them come in with their families now and enroll into our schools, and we hope they stay with us because we love seeing them come in.
Any questions for Nicole?
So do all those students then still come through the Placement Center? Is that the point of contact?
Correct, now including the pre-K.
Okay, great. Are we able to place students still pretty quickly as far as knowing where they're at? I know there's been issues with not getting records from previous schools and being able to put them in the right spot academically.
Yeah, we have a procedure manual that we follow, and if the teachers' union has asked if they come afternoon, that doesn't give them enough time with the clerical and the teacher to prepare, so then they start the following day. But if they come before noon in their elementary, they get to start the next day even without records, and then we just keep hounding the previous district for records. High school is a little bit different situation because we have to know what classes to enroll them in as they're going for credit. So we do try to push that as fast as we can, as well as they have to have an appointment with the dean or assistant principal or a principal to get them a schedule. So we aim for a three-day at the max for high school, but we really do need their records in order to get them in the appropriate classes to move toward graduation.
Do they take placement tests at all still in the Placement Center?
Yes, they can take, they can take a language test. Jane Riordan, our EL Family Engagement Coordinator, works with teachers, EL teachers who volunteer to come in and test the kids if they come in before school starts, so then that doesn't take away from learning in the classroom time.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, family engagement. Jane's coming up to join Nicole.
Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin, members of the board, it's my pleasure, I love when people who work for the departments come and are able to present as well. It's really awesome because they are really the glue and the workers for our school district. This is Jane Riordan, and she is the English Language Learner, English Learner Coordinator and Family Engagement Coordinator. And I'm really proud to say that with direction from the school board and the superintendent, the last two years, we have really grown the family engagement in this district. Very proud of it. I've gotten compliments on our website, on the programs we offer for families, and it really started three, three, four years ago where we said we really need to get our parents, our children's, our students' primary teachers, and we really need to get them involved and feeling like part of the community. So I will turn the presentation over to Jane so you can see the exciting things we're doing in family engagement.
Thank you, Nicole. Superintendent Kelly, Chairman Larkin, and members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight to talk about our exciting family engagement program. Our mission statement and for family engagement, partnership is really the word from this mission statement that stands out. We really want to partner with our families. As Nicole said, our families are children's first teachers and most important teachers. Our core values. So family engagement in Columbia Heights is both something that's embedded and intentional. So we know that it's embedded in the curriculum, in AVID, and it's also intentional in terms of family nights or the classes that we have for parents as well. So when we talk about teachers engaging families, we're talking about curriculum and AVID and that embedded piece. And we're also working with them to make communication more intentional. So one of the things that we worked on as a district family engagement leadership team over the last year was this communication checklist, and you can see that it's a timeline of the year, and it goes through expectations and best practices for how to communicate with families and ideas for communicating with families. and ideas for communicating with families. And on the left-hand side are resources that we have. And the ones that are technology-based, we've vetted with teachers. And we'll put them on there once a teacher has used them. And we can assess out whether it's appropriate, how the language functions with it, and the ease of use for both teachers and for families. So we've done kind of a soft rollout in terms of this checklist. We didn't want to just email it out to teachers. We wanted to really have conversations with them about it. So we trained the new teachers at new teacher induction about conversations with families. And we had them practice a phone call with the family, with each other. And we've been going to staff meetings, the monthly staff meetings, and talking about this. And this has really been a collaboration between family engagement and technology. Matthew Silva, the Technology Integration Specialist, has worked on this with me. And he'll make one-on-one meetings with teachers afterwards to have them set this up and train them on it. And then obviously with our new system of synergy, we'll have trainings for parents on how to use the parent view. So one step up then, we have our schools engaging families. And that's also a mix of sort of directives from the district and then also organically what the schools need. And this really comes from a lot of the schools engaging families. We have very passionate teachers who provide a lot of leadership around family engagement at each of the schools. So these pictures here are from data nights at Valley View. We piloted them last year, and this year they expanded to fourth and fifth grade where parents can come and talk about their children's math data and learn games and how to learn at home for them to increase their... They've talked about basic math facts these nights. We have home visits at all three elementary schools happening. And we have in-district trainers. So now we can provide professional development for teachers on home visits. We were talking about doing that, or we did do that in June. And now we're in discussions with schools over doing those for staff meetings. Additionally, teachers each year create learning-at-home opportunities and send those to the homes for each of their students. And then that embedded piece, principal communication within the weekly, either the phone calls or newsletters, website. And the AVID binders are certainly a piece of schools engaging families and communicating. And then finally, our district piece in terms of engaging families. Certainly, as Nicole just talked about, our first point of contact, the Placement Center. We have Victoria Campolverde, who is providing customer service for families. And she's that first point of contact. And then Marcia and I are able to be in the Placement Center now and be able to talk to families right away about if their students have an IP or are English learners. And the school or district nurse is there too to talk about immunizations. Last year, we had REACH, which is our parent education program. It's a six-week program. And last year was at REACH. Sorry, last year was at Columbia Academy. This year, it's at Highland. Highland is hosting it for all the elementary schools. And it's actually happening right now. And we are going to expand it to include a kind of a mini REACH for Somali families. We're working with someone to come in and provide that in Somali for our families. We realized that we had a lot of families who were coming to REACH a few times. And we realized that they needed something more. So Victoria was able to provide a Latino leadership course for them. And they came in to this room and met, it was probably 12 moms, who came every Tuesday for six weeks and learned about leadership. We've been doing data nights with families. Last year, we did, for the last two years, we've done with American Indian families. And we want to include, expand to Somali families this year. And with American Indians, with having Dave and Valerie now on board, we had the American Indian Family Night on Thursday. And we'll continue to have monthly meetings and cultural events with them throughout the year. So for this year, the district family engagement team is still meeting. It's a leadership team. So we meet quarterly. And then buildings are each expected to have their own team. And so there's communication between those sets of teams. And our emphasis really is on building positive relationships and on better and more frequent communication. And also that piece of responding to what the parents of each school are asking for or what they need. Also this year, we want to more effectively engage our Somali community and families. And then our continuous updates to website to reflect any new information. And this is a screenshot from our new and improved website, the family piece. So thank you again for having me here tonight. If you have any questions, Nicole, I'm happy to answer.
You don't have any questions for Jane or Nicole?
I was curious, do you have any metrics set up as far as family engagement and what you want to see in measuring how well you're doing?
The leadership team put together a rubric for schools, for the teams to measure themselves. And there's five areas. And it's, you know, communication and partnerships. And so they are able to take surveys of either the families or of the teachers and then rate themselves and set goals for where they want to improve throughout the year.
Well, this is such an important area. I would love to see those metrics and how well things are progressing.
Okay.
That would be great.
Is the movement towards Somali families just a result of a growing Somali population in the schools? Is that the impetus for that group of people specifically?
Yeah, correct. We found that it worked really well. When we run REACH, we've run, you know, a Spanish-speaking REACH and an English-speaking parallel with each other and then come together. And we found that worked really well. And as Jane said, a lot of those Spanish-speaking families were repeating year after year in REACH. So Victoria actually got free training from the University of Minnesota on the leadership. She's a native Spanish speaker, so she picked the Latino speakers to move forward. With a lot of our Somali families, the parents don't speak English or are, you know, not fluent English speakers. And so we really would like to replicate that with our Somali families.
Were you able to use texting at all? Or I've been to conferences where they've said that texting seems to be one of the most effective ways to communicate with a wide range of families.
So the resources that are on that checklist, some of them are their app-based. And those then show up as texts on parents' phones. And we found that that's a really good complement to emails and phone calls as well.
Yeah, the reason being that most families do have cell phones.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Nice job, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Principal Fort in Cast with the building vision card for Valley View.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm very pleased to be here this evening with Principal Willie Fort and Dean Camille Erickson. And we're here tonight to present the Valley View scorecard.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Directors and Superintendent Kelly. I will present the 2016-2017 Valley View Strategic Plan Scorecard and improvement goals. First of all, I want to compliment Chair Larkin on his shirt. That is a fabulous shirt, very classy.
Look at that, it says Valley View Elementary.
Our mission statement, we reviewed it a couple of times tonight. Core values. Tonight, we will focus on excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation. As of October 1st, our enrollment was 493 students. This does not, we're not counting 47 four-year-olds. And that enrollment is lower than last year's. Demographics. Hispanic students, 40%. That's up from 36%. African-American students, 32%, that's down from 34. White students, 21%, that's the same. Asian students, 6%, that's down from 7. And American Indian, 1%, down from 2%. Enrollment by special population, 40% English Language Learners. That is a 4% increase from last year. That's our most significant increase. This is MCA data from the previous four years. As stated in our work session, we have realized a two-year slide in math and reading scores. Science is up 7% from last year. Just hold on a minute. Strategic roadmap from the previous five years. I want to do a qualifier for this rubric. The levels are the ones green through blue there at the top. And in the boxes, they're actually blue on my scorecard, but they look light-colored. My rubric, I am looking at the levels as levels of effectiveness, 1 through 5. In the boxes, it actually explains that there's percentages of participation. Our participation in all of these activities remains high. But I feel as though our effectiveness is less because our achievement is lower. So I moved some things from 5 down to 4 as a result because I feel as though our effectiveness must be lower because of the achievement. So I made that adjustment in my rubric. We're still doing all of these things, but based on our achievement. Again, as I stated, we're being less effective in our productivity. Overall, Vision Card A has traditionally been one of our strongest areas. In my opinion, we went down in five of the 13 subsets this year. I will reference those five. If you have any questions about any of these ratings, please feel free to ask. A2, and I won't read all of those. A2, I feel as though we moved from level 5 to 4. A3, talks about formative student learning data to differentiate instruction. Feel as though we've gone from 5 to 4 there. A4, we're down from level 5 to 4 as well. Okay, A5. This is not one of the five subsets I was referring to. But our new math series, in my opinion, would be identified as a 21st-century curriculum. It's a reformed curriculum compared to a traditional math program. Teachers are focusing on the instructional pedagogy of math. Math concepts are addressed from the concrete to the abstract. Our media arts program would also be a 21st, would be 21st-century programming. It is a more sophisticated use of technology. A7 and A8 was also, I feel as though movement, down from level 2 to level 1. And this talks about multi-tiered interventions for academics. A8, I feel as though we're made a movement from 5 to 3. And that is the presence of multi-tiered interventions for behavior. I will say that Dean Erickson and I have met with every grade-level team, discussed last year's data, including behavior, and have set plans which we think will help us realize substantial improvement in all three areas. And I'm going to talk about those areas more starting on page 18. And those three areas would be math, reading, and behavior. This subset B is the NWEA. That's map growth. What you'll see is percentage of students that met their targets. B1, level 1. We've moved from level 2 to level 1, but the growth percentage was 40%. B2, we're up. Reading is 49%, so we moved from 1 to 2. And B3 is level 4. We moved from 2 to 4 due to the, I guess I'd say, the closeness of the achievement for all the demographics, ethnicities in our school. They're very close. They're low at this time, but they're close. So that's why that should be, I feel as though that's level 4. Okay, B5, level 1. That's based on straight proficiency. B6, straight proficiency in reading. B6 is straight proficiency in math. That's level 1 as well. B7, level 2 to level 3 in science. That's a seven-point gain. That's up. Down, B8, level 4 to level 2. And that is the gap to standard for student groups in reading or math. The groups we're talking about, the reading difference in our white students to our Hispanic students is 36 points. Math, the difference from white to our black students is 28 points. So those are the largest discrepancies. And that's why we are at level 2 for that B8. Hold on. B14, level 2 to level 5. And that's the difference between student groups in referrals out of class. No, we had no significant decrease in referrals, but the percentage of referrals more closely match our school demographics. So that's why we are at level 5 there. Okay, SMART goal for literacy. By the spring of 2017, Valley View proficiency on MCA tests, which is 3rd through 5th grade, will increase by 5% in every ethnic cell. As I stated before, we had two years of decreasing achievement. So the rationale in not having a larger number there is we have to stop or reverse the decline that we've experienced over the last couple of years. So we have to find out why we've declined over the last two years, stop that. And then hopefully, and we plan on having an increase of 5% in every ethnic cell. That's from 33% to 38% for literacy. Math, by spring of 2017, Valley View proficiency on MCA math tests will increase by 5%. And that would be from 35% to 40%. Science, we're looking at an increase of 5%. That would be 44% to 49%. Behavior, we're looking at a decrease of 10% there. Okay, our continuous improvement goals. We're going to focus on literacy, focus on math, AVID, and media arts. Focus on literacy. Number one is focused comprehension lessons incorporating grade-level text. We want to promote strong tier-one lessons. Those are the initial lessons that teachers teach. We really want to focus on that, want to expose all of our students to grade-level text. I feel as though we have spent a lot of time trying to do the remedial parts of what we needed to do to get the kids up to what we feel like is proficient at their particular grade level. But our plan is the dual focus to expose them to grade-level text as well as maintaining our interventions that we have for remediation. Secondly, inclusive curriculum with attention to Native American standards and resources. The district has provided us some trunks that are available for every grade level. Our teachers are utilizing those. Examples of things in the trunks are books, moccasins, dream catchers, bear skins. In the primary grades, they have some stuffed animals. Basically, lots of artifacts and materials to help serve as a discussion topics to spark interest in the subject matter of Native American culture. That is number two. Number three, second grade is using literacy by design. Literacy by design is very good at nonfiction, promotion of social studies information and science information. So we're glad to have that at the second grade. We feel as though it may be possibly a more balanced curriculum. And we're going to find out as we get, when we get to spring and we get our results back. Let's see. Four, K one literacy curriculum review cycle, that, that's this year. And, um, teaching and learning department, they've narrowed the, um, uh, the focus down from six. I don't know if you want to talk about that? You want us to talk about, uh, where we are with the, uh, adoption rule?
Sure, thank you. In looking at our needs assessments and our data, we re- we realized that we need to turn our focus and analyze what's happening in K five literacy. So a few years ago, we, um, added literacy by design for the grades three through five curriculum. This year, we're piloting the same rigorous curriculum and well-balanced, as Principal Fort said, in grade two. And so now we're able to turn our attention to those critical years of K one and when they're developing, um, some of the basic skills. So, um, I, we can't unfortunately do all of the grades at once to really, um, run through the process. So teaching and learning has had six presentations from six different, um, publishing companies. Um, our leadership meeting, teams are meeting to review. Um, and then we would like, we're, uh, on our November District in Service Day, all of the kindergarten and first grade teachers will come together to hear from the top three. And so we're following that curriculum cycle process of, um, reviewing and, um, talking about the possibilities and the needs that we have.
Thanks. Reading interventions, uh, read naturally, uh, can be used in targeted services as well as in our classrooms. It's a, it's a, um, it's a program to promote fluency in our elementary grades. Uh, RAS kids, tumble books. We have an MRC tutor that works with first, second, and third graders, and a reading interventionist, uh, who works with kindergarten through second grade. And, uh, students have been identified as, uh, based on their, um, levels of proficiency, uh, a- and, uh, and support, needed support. And these individuals work with those, uh, those students. Focus on math, uh, as, uh, we are in the first year of implementation of a new math program. Math and Focus is a math program based on Singapore math, which ins- ensures students are able to see the concrete of math before moving to the abstract, very hands-on, uh, math program. Uh, secondly, uh, we're going to focus on fact fluency in kindergarten through fifth grade. That is, uh, we're going, we do that quarterly, every quarter. Uh, it's addition and subtraction facts in the primary grades, and it's multiplication third through fifth grade. We get, and I get those reports from each teacher at, at, at every grade level. Uh, math interventions include a technology program called Dream Box. We use this in the classrooms and during targeted services. We have a, um, a program targeted services, not only in the afternoon on Wednesdays, but also because we're the, uh, probably the earliest star at school. Most of our buses drop off, uh, first, and, which is really good because it allows us more time to do some morning, uh, uh, morning work with targeted services. So kids do extra math and they do, uh, read naturally in both the primary and, uh, intermediate levels. Uh, extra math and MobiMax are, uh, technology programs that can be utilized during the school day as well. Okay, avid, very strong, uh, program in our school. We were the first, uh, elementary that's, uh, we started with avid and we're very glad we did. Uh, I think it's been, uh, made a, a lot of difference, promoted, um, not only the intrinsic part motivation on a, on our parts of our students and our parents to, for kids to go to a post-secondary, uh, schools. But I think some of the, uh, some of the things that, um, we do to prepare them for that. Uh, all third through fifth grade teachers have been trained. Uh, this, it's, it's, uh, filtering down into the kindergarten through second grades. Well, it's fil- filtering down in the first and second grades. Uh, they're using, uh, some of the same terminology that's, um, that the third through fifth graders use. One of those, uh, 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 I guess you'd call it terminology is slant, which is a way that, that kids sit. And it's an expected, um, uh, mannerisms of, of, of being, uh, the legs crossed and they're sitting up and their eyes are focused. And it's just, um, it's just one of the techniques that's used in our program and in our school. Uh, we have an avid committee kindergarten through fifth grade. We have, uh, one designated person that has been, uh, trained in, uh, and kind of, kind of our specially, kind of our lead for, uh, for avid. Uh, what avid brings to Valley View. First of all, the family communication piece. I think it was mentioned in the family involvement, um, presentation about the, the binders and the planners, taken home every night by all the students. That's third through fifth grade to get signed. Uh, students have their information from their day's work. Uh, they take two column and three column notes. Teachers help them, uh, help, help them get that, uh, done during the day. And then it's, uh, parents sign off on it. And we have a pretty high, uh, percentage rate of parents that sign off on, on our binders. Uh, a nice way to have parents involved in their students', uh, education. Uh, le- uh, I mentioned the note-taking. Levels of thinking, uh, that's level one through three. Uh, that filters all the way down into, I know, and into our, uh, at least to our second grade. Uh, it supports critical thinking, uh, which is one of our, uh, life skills in addition to being one of the, the four, the four Cs that we often talk about.
If I may add, the avid lead teacher at Valley View is also a nationally certified avid trainer. And she, along with another Valley View avid teacher, um, will provide their second training this year for all of the K five specialists. So that means that we're not focusing avid only in the classroom, the, the core classrooms, but also all of the art teachers, science teachers, music teachers, PE teachers are also learning what those strategies are and how that can be applied, um, not only to the, the classroom, but the core classroom, but also in their other content areas as well.
Okay, media arts, um, I'll give you a second to take a look at that picture there and also read the description underneath. Our media arts teacher is Hannah Stark. She's new, she's, uh, she's doing a fabulous job, uh, glad to have her on board. All third through fifth graders, uh, they on, they alternate with science, uh, with a science specialist. So every other day, they're either in science for, for forty-five to fifty-five minutes, or they're in media arts. Um, I think it's a wonderful program, complements the, uh, the rest of our, uh, curriculum. Uh, exposes our students to activities they wouldn't have, uh, otherwise. And that's our, um, wonderful staff, Valley View staff. Any questions? Questions?
Uh, I have a question about the math curriculum. Um, it says, uh, that there's a focus on fact fluency. Does that mean rote memorization of tables, things like that?
So, can I answer that? So with the math curriculum, math and focus, um, there's a gradual release. So that means that in the classroom, there's whole group instruction, and then students are working in groups and pairs in or until they are, um, capable and confident in that skill, and then they do their independent work. So we're not sending home, um, homework that's, um, that kids haven't been exposed to yet. Uh, this curriculum is pretty advanced, and so they're doing a lot of work that way. So the fact fluency focus is part of the homework that's going home. So it's not rote memorization in class. In class, it's lots of hands-on work. So we're sending home games. Um, there's fact fluency through some of the online technology programs. Um, and then part of the, part of the homework would be fact fluency. But the curriculum itself isn't focused around, um, it's balanced.
Okay, 'cause I heard, I heard something along the lines of the abstract thinking gets phased in later on. And I'm wondering about that because we know that with learning math, concept development and number sense is really important, even in the early phases, not just to push facts and here's a memorization table, even if it's just homework. Um, because they can forget the facts, but if they remember what they mean, then that's how they have a solid foundation in math. So I just wanted to make sure that that was being addressed.
And that's one of the things that we really love about this curriculum is that every unit goes from the abstract to the concrete. And kids are even writing sentences, like the math sentences, once they get to that point. So there's a lot of hands-on pieces. It's heavily incorporates, um, what's called cognitively guided instruction. Um, so it's really that mental math. I wish I had it when I was a kid. Were you going to add?
No, I just, uh, I come from the rote memorization, uh, generation, generations it would probably be. But the, the, the students, uh, use flashcards, um, to familiar, to familiarize themselves with the facts. And that's one of the stations, uh, with the activities that teachers, uh, do. It's often an extended activity after they finish their specific lesson for the day. They have it as for kids that finish their, their work early, that they can, they go there. Uh, it's a very necessary part of, uh, being able to do math. And it's one of the things that I have heard in, over the years is, you know, as one of the deficiencies that contributes to, uh, teach, uh, students not being as strong in math as, as what we would like for them to be. But it's, uh, you know, it's, I, I've seen, uh, half a dozen lessons, uh, mo- mostly in the primary because, um, those teachers are probationary teachers. I started on the, uh, probationary observations. I like the program, I like what I've seen, it makes a lot of sense. And it's not the kind of math, it's not the way that we, we learned math, uh, at least I learned math many, many years ago. But, um, I, I, I'm really pleasantly surprised with what I've seen, and I'm, I'm anxious to see more, uh, into the, into the fourth and fifth grades.
And, and I agree with you that there's a place for memorization, absolutely. I just want to be sure that there's enough number sense and concept development. That's all I was checking.
If I can make one comment, one thing I've noticed in classrooms is that I see the kids doing a lot of the talking about the math. And that's a big thing, is that they're doing a lot of conversations and explaining their thinking. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, I assume that the curriculum, based on what we heard in our work session, is, is district-wide, correct?
The math curriculum?
Yeah.
It is, K five.
And it's, uh, if we're adding the new curriculum in both math and reading, especially for the second grade teachers, are teachers finding they actually have enough time to prep two brand-new curriculums? Because I know it's a lot of work to implement new curriculum well. So how's that, how's that going for you guys?
Uh, one thing that we, uh, began a few years back are, are leadership teams. And so we have math leadership teams and literacy leadership teams. And with, um, the use of technology, they, so for example, this, uh, Monday evening here in this room, we had the math teachers come in, um, the math leads for each grade level for each building. And so the three teachers for fourth grade from each of the three buildings sat together. And they're, they're co-planning across the district and conferring. And so these lead teachers are providing that support and professional development to their other teachers in their, in their grade level at their school. And then because each of the grade levels have common planning time, they can kind of share the workload. So with the second grade pilot in literacy, um, we, we, some teachers jumped right on board or some teacher teams and said, I'm going to implement the entire curriculum from day one. Other teachers, um, as we were moving through the, the pilot planning, um, said, well, by the, by second semester, we'll have all of the components implemented, but we're going to ease into it for that very reason. So we need, because they were having two curriculum, curricula in the, in one year, we needed to be a little flexible on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I'm excited about the new curriculum and what it has to offer. Just, you know, hoping for teacher buy-in and implementation in the classroom is, that can be more difficult, so, yeah.
Yeah, uh, one of the things that I talked about at the beginning of the year was the kind of setting the vision for the, the year was exactly that, was the, uh, uh, new math curriculum for everyone and also, uh, literacy by design for second grade. And I talked about the, uh, growth mindset and the necessity for having a, a positive attitude and a, a high energy, um, you know, highly motivated, lots of time for planning. Uh, it's not one of those things that you can just open up and, and do and start teaching, that you have to put the time in and the effort and the energy in prior to coming into the classroom. So we talked about that then. What I also ex- said to teachers is we're on a five-week rotation as far as our weekly meetings. Um, every two, two out of the, those five meetings are, one is a literacy meeting and one is a math meeting. Okay, and then one is a, um, a committee meeting for the committee leads to make plans for when they have, uh, uh, when they present, like equity is another one of our rotations. But today, uh, we had a literacy, we had a literacy meeting. And teachers had met, uh, the academic team had met with the leads of the different grade levels and talked about what is it you, you need on Tuesday for us to do or what. And, and basically what they said was just what you were getting at is the time. So you do need the time, and we're trying to provide the time in, in our, um, forum, meaning, uh, school day, to, for teachers to be able to do that, to talk about what's working, to talk about, um, uh, what are they doing at the other grades that are working? And how does that going to impact us? And so, um, ve- a very good question. I, we're trying to provide the teachers the time that, that they need because it is something new that's, that's on their plates, an additional piece that's on their plates. And we're trying to provide them the support and the time to be able to do, to do a good job.
Yeah, thanks.
One of the Valley View teachers on Monday night told me that she had the opportunity to go and observe in the fifth grade classroom during her prep period when they were teaching literacy so that she could, because they've been teaching it for a few years now. So she could see how, you know, live, see another lesson, and that that was helpful. So, thank you for providing those opportunities.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, um, I actually want to talk about the literacy piece. Um, now, um, I remember at our work sta- session, we were moving out of one type of curriculum into another. And from the way I understood it, it was because, um, the students weren't necessarily being exposed to their grade level material when they were still in more of a, that was, we were doing more remedial work. Now, this literacy by design is going to be replacing this. Um, how much time are we actually spending in class on literacy? How, how, how many minutes per day?
Uh, ninety minutes to a hundred and twenty minutes.
Okay.
Depending on the grade level.
Okay, so, um, I mean, which, what, uh, what would be the ninety minutes and what would be the hundred and twenty?
Well, it, um, you know, um, language arts is considered, you know, uh, spelling, uh, grammar, um, uh, reading. And, uh, s- so it depends on, uh, like, some of the literacy by design, uh, has, uh, has, has a spelling piece, has a writing component. I don't know if I named writing as a, as a part of the, uh, language arts piece. But that's, that, that would, that kind of allows for it, it's, it's, at some grades where they may not do the, the, the writing. Um, you know, it, they wouldn't do the hun- they wouldn't, maybe wouldn't do the hundred and twenty minutes. We're asking for ninety minutes of, of a strong literacy block throughout the, throughout the building, and in some cases, it's a hundred and twenty minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just add that, um, we've worked with the K two Spanish teachers at Valley View and at Highland too, so that what they're teaching is aligned to, in Spanish, is aligned to what's happening in English. So if they're teaching, um, uh, you know, literacy by design is every other unit is social studies-based or science-based. So whatever the theme may be, then they're also learning that vocabulary in Spanish. So for some kids, it's being reinforced in their native language, Spanish. And for other kids, they're learning it in a second language. So it's another reinforcement of accessing those literacy components.
Yeah, I, I did, um, actually take a training with nine sixteen, uh, a while back. Um, and they were really stressing at how, um, embedding the literacy at multiple points during the day. Um, one teacher basically said, this is the way my schedule looked before I took this training, you know, where I had my block of reading, my block of writing. And she said, and whenever I went to this training, I came back and it was fifteen, an extra fifteen minutes here and twenty minutes here. And she basically, um, turned the whole, almost the whole day, almost into a reading lesson of some sort, and found some really tremendous skills. And these were with special ed students.
And that's really why we want-
Students that really, really needed the additional support. They said often that they held these- They said often that they held these students back by not exposing them to the grade-level stuff, and instead only concentrated on the remedial, you know, so they really never got to that point where they were starting to actually catch up. They were always a little bit behind. So I, I appreciate the, the focusing more on literacy, that's extraordinarily important.
We made a concerted effort to bring our specialists in, into the literacy, as literacy teachers. There's a professional development for the last couple of times have been for K-5 specialists to help us with promote literacy. One of the things we're doing in our building, Superintendent Kelly and Director Stenvik, when they come on their literacy walks in the school, is we, we want, we're promoting the word walls. Word walls and, which is vocabulary, in every content area. So if you see some language that's specific to art, that we're asking those teachers to help support that vocabulary in, in their classroom. And vice versa, the classroom words like more than, less than, that the Spanish teachers are, are teaching that in Spanish. So we, we know with the amount of time that we have, the 90 to 120 minutes that we're talking about, that we're trying to supplement and reinforce. The kids need to hit, the more they hear it, the more they're gonna retain. So we're trying to support the literacy throughout the School Day. And it's often said in middle school about everyone's a literacy teacher or reading teacher or needs to be. We're trying to, trying to do some of the same thing, is you're not only just teaching, you're a physical education teacher, but we're trying to figure out ways that you can help support kids in literacy with, with the vocabulary in, in particular.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, I like your SMART goals, given, you know, the decline in enrollment and decline in achievement. So I would love to see, you know, how, if you've met these measures and, and just get a report on that, because it is concerning, but these are, I believe are SMART goals to help turn it around.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Move on to our action items. First up are our board policies, this will be a second reading. That is for 102 Equal Education Opportunity, 414 Mandatory Reporting of Child Neglect, 506 Student Discipline, 520 Student Surveys, 529 Notification to Staff Regarding Placement of Students with Violent Behavior, 614 School District Testing Plan and Procedures, 616 System Accountability, 618 Assessment of Student Achievement, 620 Credit for Learning. These policies appeared on the September 27th meeting for first reading, and then we're approving, approval for tonight. My understanding is from Superintendent Kelly, there has been no questions or concerns?
That's correct.
Okay. Can we motion second, discuss, or do you got a question on?
I, I actually do have a question. On my, on my information here, I'm missing one of the policies. Because I have 529 and then 616, I have nothing in between. And I heard you say something in between.
614?
Yeah, it doesn't show 614.
I'm missing testing plan.
So it's not in board book?
It's not in here. Can we pull that one?
Well, maybe it's a typo on your board book.
It's not in, the policy itself isn't in there?
It's not listed in board book.
It's not listed in, in, in the, the information, is it listed on the, is it listed on the agenda?
That's what I'm reading from, is the agenda.
Yeah. You're reading from the act, okay, there it is. Yes, well, 614, okay. Looks like it's a typo. Okay, never mind, I would draw that.
Go back and look at the...
616.
Let's do this.
That's fine.
Yeah, hang on.
614 should not have been included.
Should not have been included?
Yeah, I think it wasn't, the actual policy's not.
It was, well, it was not read on the 20th, it was not on the 27th, it was not read as a first reading?
No.
Okay. So your board book is correct.
Board book one is correct, okay.
It's correct.
The policies are not in the attached, the attached policies, that 614 is not attached.
Okay. So that one should not be part of the second reading, is what you're saying?
Right. So that needs to be pulled.
So 614 School District Testing and Planning Procedures.
Okay.
And that matches with the stuff from the 27th on, this does not. Okay. So if I get a motion to move that forward?
I would move approval of the policies listed in board book.
I'm sorry?
The policies listed in board book, the motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Aye, discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next up is the Equalization Factor Resolution, and I think Bill's gonna talk about that.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We're here tonight to vote on whether the board would like to include our school district as a district of support for a resolution to go forward through MSBA to the legislature to improve the equalization, equalization factors when it comes to taxing communities for operating levies that school districts have passed. I think the best way to make an example of what, what it's like is, for example, if, if, for your house that you have right now, if, if you're paying a hundred dollars a year in taxes to the school district to raise, say, we raised approximately $400, $4 million for that operating levy, if we go over to one of our Western neighbors, those people are only paying $20 to $30 a year to, to raise the same amount of dollars. And that's what we're talking about, we're trying to equalize between school districts, so that the money that, that, that particular community raises on a household basis is, builds the same amount of revenue for that school district. I put a sample, the sample resolution again in your packet. Again, that's a sample, that's a resolution that'll go to MSBA, and then will come out of the members who are involved in, bringing those forward and gets voted on here this fall. So again, we're not actually voting on the resolution, we're voting whether we're gonna be, include our school district as supportive for this resolution that will go through MSBA.
Can a motion to move that forward, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Laura, discussion?
Do you know how this would affect businesses at all?
I, I think that the main point is to equalize it. It's, it's not, the point isn't to make different classes pay more.
Okay.
Okay, it's, it's to everybody, whatever they would pay, would generate the same kind of dollars in each school district. So we're not looking at lowering a rate on one class and increasing a rate on another class. It'd be more of a shared piece across the, across the state, where what would happen was, we would receive more aid for our operating levy than, so that when we pay our taxes, it's about the same as a neighboring district. So it, it comes to getting more money out of the legislature, so that our taxes would be approximately the same as a neighboring district with a higher commercial base. Because right now, the commercial bases in some of these other districts pay most of the taxes. Where in our district, that's not true at all, not even close. So, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not asking the legislature to tax other people more, we're saying it needs to be more fair, so that we would receive more aid.
So we're talking about property taxes?
We're talking about property taxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if a business does not own the property, the business is not impacted?
Well, the owner of whatever that property is, is impacted.
An occupant would not necessarily be if they didn't own the, own the building.
I mean, you know, always through whatever type of lease, some of the, the dollars flow through. But again, we're, we're not looking at increasing a different class, just lowering, lowering taxes so that we generate the same amount of dollars.
Would this affect the taxes we have to assess against our own properties, would you say?
Well, well, that, see, that's the hope. We're hoping that we would be able to lower our taxes and still generate the same revenue. That is what we're, we're trying to do with this resolution.
Okay.
Does that mean it'll be raised in other districts?
See, I, that's not what we're, that's not what we're asking the legislature to do, we're asking them to equalize it. So, you know, we're not asking, you know, a neighboring district to send us their money. Okay? But in a roundabout way, you're kind of looking at that, because the other piece that, where the tax would come from is then out of, out of income taxes.
So where does it come from?
It'd be a shift.
Yeah. So would it come from the income taxes within this district, or really is it equalization to give relief to the taxpayers here?
It's, it's relief to the, relief to the taxpayers, and, you know, the taxes that are collected from, from the state, you know, through our income taxes, that's state-wide. So they're not gonna, we're, I don't know of any place where we're, we have a higher rate of income tax in one, you know, one county where we do it another. They're all the same. It depends on how much money you make. They're not looking at changing those rates.
And, and I, I'm, if I'm wrong, just stop me and correct me here, but the way I understood it is, we can certainly only levy a certain percentage of whatever our net tax capacity is. Is that correct?
Yeah, which goes back to 1% of your, it's 1% of whatever your value is on your property.
Right. So, so since we have a low net tax capacity, because we don't have a lot of businesses in this area, we're, we're not lucky enough to have like, you know, a nuclear power plant or something pay for all of our school needs, you know, like some districts have, that what happens is, is we're, we're funding that literally on the homeowners. The homeowners are paying that, so we pay a higher percentage, we're paying a higher percentage of our property taxes to the school district because it's not equalized out.
Right.
Am I correct on that?
Right.
Because we don't have as large of a net tax capacity, so to raise the $4 million, we, we really have to, I mean, we're really at that ceiling right now. I'm, okay, now fill in the blanks here, because that was a very clumsy kind of...
Well, I, I, I think what you're saying is, is a very good example. A district would have something like a nuclear power plant, that is a very high-valued piece of property, and they get taxed on their value. So they generate a lot more dollars from that commercial property than they do from their homeowners. But again, I want to reiterate, we're, we're not, we're not going to the state legislature and saying, we want you to tax our commercial property higher, that, that's not what we're saying at all. We, we want to equalize across the state of Minnesota, so that if you pay a dollar and you pay a dollar, it ends up $1 in the school district, instead of 1 here and 20 over here. We want it to be flat.
Do you know anything about, it says that this should be included in an omnibus education bill versus the, um, special, or another tax bill?
Well, I, I think what they're looking at there, they, they really want this to be tied to education. So we want it in the education omnibus bill and not the tax bill. We want, we want the legislature to, to equalize the taxes through, for education, and not have it tied to some other type of tax.
So the omnibus tax bill generally deals with educational issues, is that correct?
No, I think I'm, I'm gonna miss, let me look at what it says here. Again, this is a sample, you know, I'm not the expert when it comes to taxes. And I didn't generate this resolution, so.
I think we're-
That is a disclaimer.
Bill, if I could for just a second, I think the, the questions that we're raising are excellent questions, but what truly looking for us is, do we support moving our district forward and legisla, and, and appeal the legislation to provide some type of equalization for taxes for different districts? And that's really what you're looking for, for us to-
That's what we're looking for.
To move forward.
And what would happen is, and on the top of these resolutions, it would make, it would be a list of school districts that agree with this resolution. And what we're voting to do is put our name on the top of this resolution.
Well, this is just a sample, this is-
This is a sample, it's not, it's not in final form. This is just the ideas of how it would come forward.
If I may, just some background on how this procedure works, especially for the new board members, is every year there, there's a delegate assembly where representatives from the various school boards meet for an MSBA delegate convention, and then those delegates would vote on this resolution, and ultimately that would decide whether it goes forward to the lobbying group for MSBA, whether they're gonna push for this or not. So that's the process.
Any other questions for approving moving forward? Okay. You none, then? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And lastly, the annual report on the World's Best Workforce. What's that? Yeah, I had a motion from Ted and a second by Laura.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, Director Mann and I are here to seek action on the World's Best Workforce Report that will be mailed out to the community. This was included in your previous packet a couple of weeks ago as a draft, so this evening we'll show you a more updated version of the World's Best Workforce. So, cover page. Kind of an overview of what the World's Best Workforce is. One of the requirements is sharing with who the committee members are, and then we're also, this, this particular document is twofold, so it's alerting the community to our mandatory World's Best Workforce Report, which will be, the details will be housed on our website, which is per the state requirement. And then also to share with the community some of the things that we're doing in order to comply, and, and some of the works that we're doing. So here you can see ways to get involved, and then highlighting some of our different programs in schools throughout the district. Some of our beautiful children there, so all the way up to the high school. This is a good way for families and community members to see all of the things that we offer in our school district. And then highlighting different aspects of what we've done in our district. Again, this is for last school year. So here's the page on academics that goes through some of, some of the highlights, being the, named the Advanced Placement Small District of the Year, the generous scholarships that are raised by our community and given to our high school seniors, and our expansion of American Indian education programs. Continuing with academics, our personalized learning initiative and AVID, and then moving on to our community partnerships with the National Sutton Award that was received last year. And of course, last year we, we applied for the free pre-K programming that we're implementing this school year in all three elementary schools. Other highlights with arts and athletics, so of course our national art award winner, and many of our different athletes going to state and winning different awards. Also included are facts and figures, and then really wanting to share with the community about our financial audits and capital levy projects. And then more information, contact information, of course, board members' names, superintendents' names, contact information for each of the schools and programs. One thing that we've added this year is, you can see along the right-hand side, a perforated tear-off bookmark, and it's in English and in Spanish. So here, along with all of the different ways to follow us on social media and phone numbers for how to contact us, it's one way that we're promoting literacy across the community. So here, I'll give it to you on the screen in, in English. So Heights Reads, and just kind of prompting for families and for parents as you're reading with your child, what are some different questions that you can ask as you're reading with your child? So we thought that would be a good addition, a good addition. So I wanted to add that this has really been a collaboration between the Communications Department and the Office of Teaching and Learning to put this together. The information that is required in the World's Best Workforce will go to, before it goes to the state level on December 15, it will go to the World's Best Workforce Public Meeting and Committee, which is, will take place at the end of this month. Then the World's Best Workforce Committee will meet four times throughout the school year to provide input on all of the different areas that are required. So academics, curriculum, so since, in the past, we had a different curriculum committees and different staff development committees, and one thing that I really appreciate about the World's Best Workforce legislation is that it's kind of bringing all of our different plans and pulling it all into one, one place. So our title plans are aligned to our World's Best Workforce plans. So this is just a, this is a way that we'll send out to the community to direct them to that information that's required to be on our website. to be on our website. If you have any questions?
Start with a motion moving forward, please.
Don't move.
Molly?
Second.
Maddie? Discussion?
So have you printed these out yet?
No, this is in draft form.
Okay. There's, there's a couple-
Just caught another error tonight. Minor.
Missing an A.
In my last name.
Yes, thank you.
But other than that, it looks beautiful. Even with that, it's beautiful.
The more eyes on this document, the, the better. We appreciate it.
Can I add one then?
Please.
Under the free pre-K programming, at the end, it drops off after morning and, at the end, it just kind of stops. I think there's a sentence that didn't fit in there or something.
Formatting?
Under free pre-K programming.
It's in the dark blue section.
Under community. I don't know what page it is, sorry.
I'm reading a random sentence.
It just says, yeah, double the number of four-year-olds attending morning and.
It must be formatting, yep.
Yep.
Before it goes, before it is mailed out, it goes to the printer and we get another mock-up and then we get another chance to read it and go through all of the different edits. And we have multiple people run their eyes over it. So it hasn't gone through that stage yet, but we definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
It, it looks really good.
It's really visual.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, is this something that must be approved by the school board? Is that required?
Things are changing as world's best workforce evolves, so until, until the state finalizes everything under ESSA, we're still asking that the school board approves it per the previous requirements.
Okay. The reason I ask, this really doesn't fall under governance, but if it's required?
It falls under MDE.
Okay, all right. We don't want to make MDE mad.
This is just basically a report. It's, it's a summary. I think that would fall under our, under our-
Any other questions or-
Governance.
Comments? You none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thanks, thanks.
Looks great. Anybody have anything for board topics before we adjourn?
Alumni dinner coming up.
Yep, that's right. You none, meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-four.